So, we are recording this meeting and pursuant to Governor Baker's orders imposing strict limitation on the number of people who may gather in any one place. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation. Specific information and guidelines are available on the town website. People can join by Zoom or people can join by phone. Every effort is being made to assure the public an adequately access. So again, we are recording and just a reminder that the recording is not an official public document. And if you'll forgive me, my phone battery is almost dead, so give me a couple of seconds to just go plug it in. I'll be right back.
Can you unmute? There we go. All good.
Okay. All right. Sorry for that beginning. I've had a really rough couple of hours politically and so I, other than ground rules tonight, I'm going to suggest we just have a few seconds of silence that we all can sort of catch our breath either literally or figuratively, and then we can dive into it. Okay. Everybody ready to go? So, we have the Treasurer Collector in for 6:00 PM. That comes in 10 minutes. So, I think we can work on the first agenda item, which is the Belt Memo during some public... I don't know who wants to start on that. Maybe that's John. Do you want to comment on the memo?
On the Board of Health? What are we talking about? I'm sorry. Can't hear you, Mark. You're talking, but I can't hear you.
Mark, your audio disappeared. Oh, now he disappeared.
Well, wait a minute. Let him hop on before I start on. You're muted, Mark. Can you hear?
We can't hear you.
Better go get Kim's phone or something.
Can you dial in from another phone?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hey, good.
Okay. Well, John, do you want to start on the Board of Health Memo? Or Liz, do you want to start on that?
Sure. So, we are in receipt of a memo from the Board of Health. And it talks about the March 2020 guidance that came out. And then it goes on to the third revised order regulating gatherings, which is COVID-19 Order Number 46. It states in part that indoor gatherings are limited to eight persons per 1,000 square feet of accessible indoor floor space and never more than 25 persons in a single enclosed space. Additionally, all participants shall maintain at least six feet of physical distance from every other participant. Then it goes on to state that the Board of Health has made a decision to discontinue in-person meetings on town-owned property until further notice. It says, "At present time, boards and committees are meeting virtually, and there are no plans to change this. However, in the event that a board or committee were convening a meeting to review a large plan set or to conduct business that is otherwise not able to be effectively completed virtually, arrangements could then be made to hold an in-person meeting with participants following the protocol." And then it goes on to explain how to request such an in-person meeting. And in conclusion, it states that "All boards of health and the Commonwealth must put the health and safety of its residents first during this difficult time. The guidance given by the Commonwealth has strongly urged local boards of health to not let their guard down at this time and to continue to stringently enforce best practices and protocol around social distancing in order to keep our citizens safe."
So, I have some... I have some issues with that, but I'll discuss it when we get into the update on the Council on Aging.
Hey, Liz, I've got a question for you. How does this impact, like, planning board hearings that are scheduled for this week? Do you know?
So, the Planning Board falls into that category for, I believe, it's two particular public hearings that are currently ongoing. So, we have worked with the Chair of the Planning Board to conduct those in a safe manner. And other than the Board, they have a whole waiting protocol. They don't have applicants waiting around in the meeting room. It took quite a bit of effort to get that planned out, and we've been successful with that. But we're trying to obviously keep the numbers down of those occurrences.
Thank you, Liz. I appreciate that.
Mark, you want me to do the Council on Aging update, and then you can get into the bylaw review?
That's sure.
Sure.
We'll do that, and then we'll go to Colleen.
Somebody else is on the line. I'm not sure who's talking.
John, go ahead with what you wanted to... And then we'll go to Colleen.
Okay. We've got an echo with you. That was it, Mark. So, the Director of the Elder Services resigned, and we're now moving forward trying to put a plan together to have an interim strategy while we go and start to do a search for another Director. I've talked to all the Board members except for one, and that person, I believe, is still in the hospital, but I'll check tomorrow. Everybody's positive about the Board taking a more active role in the management of the Council on Aging, so I think that's good. Jean Pacheco, who is our receptionist, is back, and she's working under the guidance of Liz, and she seems very positive, so that's good. We've also got Jim back as our driver, and he also seems very positive. Liz has checked with a number of things. She's got the... What have you got, Liz? I've got so many things going on.
Meals on Wheels is all set. And then I was able to figure things out for the food pantry and the items that we've been getting from South Shore Community Action Council. So, Jean and I have a plan for that tomorrow. She's going to take an inventory, let me know what foods they need, and we're going to see if Jim Mustakar can go pick everything up this Friday between 11:00 and noon.
So, we have, I think Liz has got everything covered but the bread pickup. And a lady did come in who wanted to volunteer. She said she'd pick it up. Apparently, she doesn't live in town, but her, I think her folks might. So, I asked Nancy Butler if she knew her, and she did not. So, we'll follow up with that, but I think that might be the answer. It's just picking up the stop-and-shop bread supplies. I talked to Janine Eaton, who is the manager out at Woodlands. She was very sorry to see Joy leave. She thought Joy did a good job of supplying Woodlands with a lot of supplies. So, we'll have to follow up and make sure that that doesn't drop through the cracks. Joyce Curran, who is our outreach worker, had resigned with Joy because of her husband's ill health. Apparently, he had a stroke, and she now is doing a lot of full-time care. So, the issue that's on the table right now is how to go forward with the meetings with the Council on Aging Board. There's about 10 people. We did have a meeting last Monday, and while the meeting room worked fine, the way the people gathered in the lobby pre and post-meeting left a lot to be desired, and the Board of Health was upset, rightly so. So, we have to work on that. But this memorandum they've put in place about not having any meetings is really going to put a burden on the Council on Aging, because some of the people don't have computers. A number of them, where Jean has brought forward that we need to use microphones because of their hearing, so that's going to present a problem around phone use. And I think we need to have the meeting in person. And if that means, the only thing I can think of is, I don't see why we can't use the room and change the hours, but Liz and I are thrashing that out. If that doesn't work out, then I would say we might have to think about reducing the Board, the number of people, which I do not want to do, and I don't think it would be smart. I don't see taking it off-site. I don't see how we can go to someplace and say we want to rent a room or have a room available. If we're not willing to do it in our own building, why would we take it off-site and then go to another place? So, that's still to be discussed. Tentatively, we have a meeting set up for a week from Monday. Monday, I'm sorry. We are on Monday, so next Monday. And I was hoping that we could have that at the Townhouse. Nancy Butler is the chairperson for the Council on Aging Board. She's getting involved. I feel very good about her activities and her willingness to help. So, all in all, I think we're going to, we'll be okay. We just got to work on some day-to-day logistics. Liz, you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think we're in really good shape. I feel like we made a lot of headway as far as establishing how we're going to keep some of the existing programs going. And so, as of right now, it seems like there will be no disruption in services whatsoever. So, that's really the important piece here. So, I'm glad that everybody was able to mobilize and work together to keep everything going. On my end, I guess I would ask the Board if you have any preference as far as when we would want to look into posting a position. I wasn't sure if that was something that you wanted to do in the immediate, or if that was something that you wanted to put off for a bit. So, I'm just looking for guidance from you as far as when I post the position.
This is Mark. I'm on the phone and hopefully in a place where the cell service is okay. In answer to that, as far as I'm concerned, I would be inclined to want to post the position as soon as possible and get the search going.
I sort of have a little different view, Mark, because I'd like to, one, understand the operation before we go off and try to find somebody. Now, I did send out a note that a former Director, you know, had moved back into this area, and whether we might want to reach out and see if that person would be willing to come in for a month or two until we kind of stabilize this. I didn't hear any reaction to that.
I think that's a consideration. I think actually, to some extent, the job's changed quite a bit, just in terms of, you know, it becoming so much more about grants and following through on that. I think it'd be worth checking that out.
From my perspective, we haven't had a Council on Aging in one respect, that the number of seniors in this town versus the outreach that we do to reach the vast majority has not been taken place. We've been doing the basic, which is Meals on Wheels, the bread pickups, the outreach when needed, but that's on an individual basis. And I think what we have to think through is, what do we want this Council on Aging to really be? I think it's, myself, I think we've got over 800 people in town that are senior citizen age. We should be starting to think through, how do we impact that broader group?
You know, and to some extent, they kind of feel like that's all the more reason to get the new person in to help with reshaping that. I mean, I, one piece of this, I totally am so thankful, John, that you're taking up this in a really big way. I think, I mean, I do feel like we've got to be careful to not have Liz get overwhelmed with stuff to do as well, since there are so many other things going on. I mean, it seems like the first step is creating a job description that we don't have. I don't know how quickly that could be done.
I don't know who's going to do it, because quite frankly, I don't know what the job is yet.
I can put together a draft description based on my knowledge of what the former Director was doing, and also look at what some recent descriptions entail from some other towns who have hired for a similar position. And then I can circulate it to the three of you, and we could forward it over to Nancy Butler in case she notices anything that might be missing. I do think, to an extent, where we're a little uncertain and there's not going to be any overlap between the former Director and the new person coming in, that it would be wise to keep things somewhat broad in the description and have it be a little bit more mission-based and goal-oriented as opposed to, you know, getting into the real fine details of it. But that's just my view of it.
Well, and maybe that exercise would give us a sense of whether we have to pin down or not, or whether we need more time to see about a pin-down. But I think that's an exercise worth starting. It may act as a diagnostic as well on what else we need to know. So, I'd love to see that started, if you can work on that. And I probably don't have to reinvent the wheel in terms of other local towns, not in a totally different situation than ours.
Right.
Yeah, I like that, Liz, being more like objective-based rather than, you know, getting into the minutia, because as long as the job's done, that's really all I care about.
Right. All right. I'll finish and get the draft out then in the next couple days.
All right. Would it be possible to wait until after the Council on Aging meets before we do any posting, just because where they're going to be taking a more active role? It might be good to solicit their input in the process before we advertise a position?
Yeah. Why don't I get the draft together by the end of the week, and I'll circulate it to the three of you and also to Nancy, and then they can talk about it at their next meeting, or at least take a look at it, whatever form that's happening in, and then they can let us know prior to posting it.
That sounds great. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does that take care of that topic for the moment? I guess it does. So, Colleen, are you there?
I am.
Wonderful. So, we are starting this new agenda item where we invite into Board of Selectment Meetings Department Directors, Chairs of Committees, Commissions, and we decided, so this is the very first one, and we start, figured we'd practice on you, Colleen. Really, this is intended to be pretty open-ended, maybe 10- or 15-minute thing at most unless something major came up. Really, just a chance to check in for the person visiting us to maybe update us on old issues or new issues or new developments, and successes or concerns or questions. And I did mention to Colleen that Christine had particular interest in tax title and land takings, and so recognizing that that's pretty broad and even a little nebulous, we'd love to just give the floor to Colleen for a few minutes and see what she has to say.
Okay. The only new issue that I've been dealing with is our new unemployment issue. It appears that a couple of people within the Townhouse have gotten fraudulent reports that they haven't filed that I've had to deal with. And I actually contacted Ms. Lenatra to help me get into unemployment, because I was tired of sitting there for 45 minutes at a time on hold. And she's done a great job helping me and putting me in contact with somebody there. So, I think the two fraud cases have been nipped in the bud. There are a couple of other cases of people who filed through their primary employer, and we've gotten included in the billing that were on-call substitute teachers and on-call EMT and fire that we shouldn't be paying for, and we're being billed for, so I'm trying to get that taken care of. And there's one police officer that resigned that is collecting through us, and I'm trying to get that taken off the books. I have until December to make the payment that they're saying is due us, so that's kind of the timeframe that I have to get it taken care of by. Otherwise, we've got to pay it and then get reimbursed. So, that's one new thing. Foreclosures and whatnot were put on hold with COVID, because I can't evict anybody and I can't throw any foreclosure on anybody during this period. But I have started the tax title for the 2019, which is the most current year. We're always a year behind. I've got 14 going into tax title, and all of which is land, 10 of which is land of low value, meaning less than a value of $22,862. There are four above that value, of which one wants to donate, and I think Christine had an email that I had sent her. The land is on Center Street and it busts Harry Jason Park, and he inherited it, didn't know he inherited it, and doesn't want to have to pay the taxes, so he wants to give it to the town. That's about the only thing of any interest that would be worth anything. There's another one with a 6,000-square-foot lot that wants to give it to the town. The heirs have all sent me a letter donating it to the town, but it's only a little corner, and it's being used by another parcel. So, that's the only person it's really good for. I had four properties in foreclosure, of which were not residences, two of which Dana Charles came forward and had his attorney take out of foreclosure last week. I haven't filed the redemptions yet, because I'm waiting for the check to clear. The other two foreclosures are 163 Center Street, which is the horse farm, and the other one is 64 Brook Street, which is the house that's burnt down. And right now, they're in the land court. Any questions on that? Hello?
No questions for me. That sounds good, Colleen.
Great report. Good stuff. Thank you, Colleen. Anything else you want to let us know?
No, everything's pretty good when the excise tax demands and warrants and the personal property, I only have four deadbeats in the whole town, so I think we're doing pretty good.
Beautiful.
Colleen, typically, what's the lead time? Once you start the tax title process? It's several years, isn't it, before it's completed?
I do a tax taking. Six months after the tax taking, I can put it into foreclosure. Depending on the value of the property, it depends if it goes to the Department of Revenue by way of land of low value, which I can do myself and not involve any auctioneers. The other way, you have to involve the auctioneer, have the auction, and go through the land court, which the land court can take up to a year. And then after that year, they have another six months to come forward and pay it off before it actually becomes town-owned. Did you get it?
Yeah. Thank you, Colleen. One more question. Is it possible to get the list of the town's current properties to the Town Properties Committee for their review?
A list of all the town-owned properties?
Yes, the town-owned properties that have been taken through tax title or whatever, but have all completed the process where they're now officially town properties.
Yeah, I have a list of those at the office.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Beautiful. Anything else for Colleen? Excellent. Colleen, thank you so much. We really appreciate the fellow report. Well done. And thanks for letting us experiment on you.
Yeah, I don't mind being a guinea pig.
Okay. So, let's see. We did Council on Aging. We got the Treasurer Collector's report.
I'm going to check out if it's all right with you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Bye-bye.
So, we're up to the Bylaw Review Committee meeting update, and I guess that's for me to comment on. So, knowing there have been some frustrations on that committee, and I attended their meeting last week, my intent was to kind of listen and hope that they would feel heard, and then to make a few comments. In order for them to recognize the work that we have done along the way, I did do a chronology reminding that committee that Christine had met with them... productive meeting and discussed, um, his approaches both to new violations and existing ones, and that we felt like, um, he had a, um, a balanced, um, uh, reasonable approach to each. Um, in, in late July, um, understanding that there were still, um, some frictions and tensions in the committee, um, I invited, uh, the Chair, uh, to meet with Liz and I. We had a very good meeting. We talked about the issues at hand. Um, at the end of the meeting, we came up with several action steps and including, um, meeting the Board of Selectmen representatives, uh, meeting quarterly with, um, the committee's representatives, uh, uh, us meeting with Tom quarterly, um, and, um, um, I think there was a sense that that would move things along pretty well. Um, uh, um, since, um, since then, uh, Liz and, uh, Tom had a meeting, uh, to go over further, um, the process of looking at existing complaints and new complaints. Uh, Tom and Alan met and had a meeting, and then I attended this meeting last week. Um, I think there's still a lot of frustration. They, this committee has worked extremely hard over the last three years, and, um, I, I, some, some of them, I think, have a sense that the progress on enforcement is going a little slower than they would like. Um, uh, at the meeting that I attended, we certainly discussed that, uh, to some extent, some of this enforcement is a cultural change and that it takes time. Um, uh, uh, they certainly had quite a bit of conversation about taking on a role of educating, educating the people of town, of the new bylaws, e- educating officials of the new bylaws. They are also interested in putting together some tools that might be helpful in educating the public and educating, um, everyone about all of this. Um, somewhere along the way, I reread some of the bylaws, um, um, in preparation for that meeting and came across Section two point one point one E. Um, and what that section essentially says on enforcement is that within two weeks of hearing a complaint or a concern, uh, the zoning enforcement officer, um, would, um, make a determination, would report back to the person, um, um, with the concern and report back to the Board of Selectmen. In that report, he would give, um, his, uh, um, opinion in, um, in terms of what the complaint was and the reasons he came to that opinion. And, um, that seemed like a really concise way to move forward, um, uh, to have a protocol or a procedure. Um, and since it was written by the, um, uh, that committee and voted at town meeting, it actually is the bylaw. So, um, having seen that, I checked in with Tom late last week. He's totally on board with that approach. Uh, I think the Bylaw Review Committee has a list of concerns that we may then want to forward to, uh, Tom for, um, him, his action as he'd like to do. So forgive me for rambling on, but I, I just wanted to update you all. I, I, I would reiterate, this is a tremendously hard-working and dedicated committee, um, you know, trying to do some really hard work, trying to, um, uh, change the culture. Um, I hope that, um, sort of, that the structure we put forth, these quarter, quarterly check-ins, uh, the using Section two point one point one as, um, the, kind of the guideline to move forward on, um, complaints and concerns, and that hopefully with time, some of the tension and frustration in the slow pace of all this can, um, uh, can subside a little bit. So there. Okay, I guess we can move on to the next topic, which, uh, I think is school district information and updates.
Um, I don't believe that John Billington is necessarily joining us on the call tonight, um, but school is back in session, and it seems like we have ironed out a much better plan moving forward as far as submitting for the CARES reimbursements with the county. Um, so the Fire Chief and, um, Christine Haley from the Silver Lake Business Office have been working really well together, um, over the last few days to kind of work out the final details for some of those last and middles for the first round of funding. So, um, more to come on that, but for now, it seems like we're in good shape as far as getting reimbursed for some of those necessary COVID expenses relative to the school department.
Beautiful. Thanks for that report.
I think, uh, actually, there's a, uh, school committee meeting going on right now on Zoom.
Yeah, that sounds right. I think I saw that on the town calendar, so, um...
So the next agenda item is future agenda items, and I think, uh, that one is mainly who in terms of, uh, department heads or chairs of committees, commissions, we'd like to invite to our next meeting in two weeks. Anyone have, anyone in particular, uh, they'd like to speak to soon? Okay, so I will go down the list and choose someone and invite them, and we'll meet with them next time. Um, the, the one other agenda-
Mark.
Yeah?
Mark, you know what might be helpful for that is if we could find out if maybe Wendy could join us, if possible?
Oh, great.
Um, perhaps we could get an update for, um, Soul Homestead and that project, and I know that her office and she's been working very hard on, um, some of the solar regulations. They've updated some of their practices and are going to be entering in the process of negotiating, um, some new pilot agreements. So that might be a worthwhile update to get.
Great. I'll see if she can come. Um, the other agenda item that I, I think we kind of intended for tonight, uh, um, and it didn't quite get on the agenda, probably my fault, is, um, the quarterly or the every two-months review of our priorities and, uh, uh, our priorities and projects list. But we'll certainly get that on the agenda for the next meeting in two weeks. Um, that being the case, that brings us down to the Town Administrator's Report.
Um, so we've been working hard with the Council on Aging, trying to fill any gaps. I think we've pretty well gone over that during John's COA update. Um, but the takeaways from that are that the Meals on Wheels program, um, the Food Pantry program, the Brown Bag program, as well as transportation, um, will still continue to run as scheduled, so no one should really be experiencing any sort of disruption to any of those services. Um, I'm in the middle of submitting our quarterly report for our Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant, and we're in the process of pulling together some information for that so that we can have our next meeting with the consultant, um, sometime in October. So we've been working on that. Um, we're also just working on pulling together some of the submittals, um, the, this current round of the CARES funding and the reimbursement. Um, this round closes at the end of this month, so some last-minute record-keeping and, and things like that. Um, we're also in the process of hopefully getting the Community Paramedicine Program that the Fire Chief spoke about, um, at our meeting on, I believe that was September eighth, um, that he spoke about that. Um, so we're working on getting that finalized with the state. The Board of Health has signed off on it, so all good things, but it's, it's been a very busy couple weeks.
Um, anything in correspondence, Liz?
Um, we did receive notification, the town apparently gets a small percentage back from ride-share programs that are registered with the state. So those are things like Uber and Lyft. Um, it's not a large amount of money. It's probably somewhere around one hundred fifty dollars, but it looks like we may have got allocated, um, similar amounts over the last few years. And if that's the case, um, I'm trying to find out from the state what might be some eligible expenses that we could use that on. I believe it has to be somewhat transportation-related. Um, I have a, an email in to Colleen to sit down with her. I just want to go over, um, past disbursements because it's possible we may have five hundred or so dollars there. Um, you know, it might help towards signage, for example, um, even for the new safety zones once those are fully established, something like that. Um, so small, small item, but that notification did come through in correspondence. Um, also, the people, I believe it's from Fundraise, um, one of the solar companies, they are looking to do a street crossing, um, at Ring Road, so I think we should put that on the next agenda and, um, see what we might want to do for getting notification out to people. And they also want to connect with Rob for a lot on that, just to make sure that there are no issues as far as paving work or anything like that. So I think we should put that on the next agenda, if that's okay.
Great. Okay. Um, I think that brings us to minutes, uh, for September eighth. Um, and, um, um, anyone have any, um, edits?
I believe we have two sets of executive session minutes open, don't we?
Yeah. Um, shouldn't we do those in executive session?
Sure, if you want to call it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should. Um, so I had a couple corrections on the, or suggestions for corrections on the minutes. Um, but for a jump into it, I, who's, who's gonna record these suggestions, um, to make the changes? Will that be you, Bree?
Hello? Sorry.
Hi, John.
Hello?
So, will you be keeping track of the changes that, that are suggested?
Um, yeah.
Or do you, do you want me to and get them to you?
However you want to do it, 'cause usually, um, one of you would make the changes and then I would get back, but Christine would jot down all the changes, and I would take it when I was, you know, physically with you guys. So now it's kind of hard of who's making what change, especially if it's lengthy and you want to do cross-outs or edits.
All right, so I'll, um, I'll keep track of these and bring them into you tomorrow, okay?
That's fine, sure.
Okay.
And then as soon as I get them, I'll get them over to Clerks.
All right. Um, so I, I had two or three. Anybody else have comments on the minutes before I off my?
Mark, my only comment was, um, where it said kudos, just to say, um, the board thanks, or something like that instead of kudos. And then there was one, two, it should have been a T-O-O, and it was on the second page. And that's all I've got.
All right. I will, uh, go through and look for two. Um, all right, so I had three or four things. The beginning of the second page, I think, is a dangling phrase, um, "in addition to grant awards totaling over two hundred and forty thousand." Oh, no, maybe not. Um, uh, I take it back. I take that one back. I'm gonna look for the two on the second page. On the third page, I thought maybe we should add, um, there's a sentence that begins, "After much discussion, uh, Mark Russo made a motion to create two safety zones." I'd like to just add, "which, which would reduce the speed limit to twenty miles per hour." Um, and then on the last page, uh, there's a comment about the right of first refusal on the sale of the property on Lake Street, and I think maybe that should read, "Town Administrator checked with town council who opined, um, that a request for right of first refusal, um, wasn't necessary." And then way back down at the bottom, right after John Trainer, it says delete, and we definitely don't want to delete John Trainer.
No, we do. We do. We just need one person on the minutes.
Okay. Um, oh, that was an instruction. All right. Uh, so will it be Bree's name on it then? John?
Excuse me? Yeah, Bree. Yeah.
Okay. Very good. All right, so I will, um, I'll bring those changes into Bree tomorrow, and that takes care of minutes, and, uh, I think that brings us to, uh, rants and raves.
You have to vote on them. You need to vote.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, good for you. Um, so I make a motion, the minutes be approved as amended. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Um, all those in favor? Aye.
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 All right. All right, we're up to rants and raves.
All right, I'll go first. Um, my rave would be Liz and John and the, um, the Council on Aging Board, who have totally, you know, stepped up in this, um, this time to make sure that we're continuing to meet the needs of, um, the seniors in town. So thank you all very much for your efforts to, um, ensure that, um, our seniors are still receiving the services that they need during this, um, interim time.
I'm gonna pass on a rave tonight.
Um, and I actually, um, am in a place that maybe it's easiest for me to pass as well. Okay. Any last words? Um, well, I better have some last words, so I, much, much appreciated, everyone, as we continue to work with a bunch of issues. I was gonna say struggle, but, um, it's always a bit of a struggle, and, uh, I actually heard, I, you know, I do have a, I do have a rave. I heard a, um, academician, a teacher of writing at a college level, maybe a post-grad level, who was talking about, um, essay, the word essay, and assigning essays, um, and he met a fair amount of resistance from those that maybe weren't good at writing, and he reminds them about situations that the word essay means at its root, the Latin root, is to try, and that when, um, in times of struggle, um, it is, one focuses less on outcomes and struggle and more on simply trying, uh, the more successful. So, um, I appreciate the degree to which we, um, all, um, try, uh, so may we continue to do so, and, uh, may the outcomes be good along the way. Okay, so I wish everyone a good evening. We'll be back together in two weeks.
Good night.
Good night.
See ya.